The regular meeting of the Planning Commission is now called to order for August 13th, 2024. If everyone will please stand for a silent moment of prayer or meditation, and it will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance that will be led by Commissioner Becerra. Please flag and right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Joanne, will you do the roll call?
Commissioner Becerra?
Here.
Vice Chair Hang?
Here.
Chair Williams?
Present.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Here.
Commissioner Lewis?
Present.
The record show all Planning Commissioners are present.
Now we've reached a point in the agenda. Have the Commissioners had an opportunity to look over the two sets of minutes for approval for the Planning Commission meeting of June 25th, 2024 and July 9th, 2024? Any comments?
Yeah, I have, I have a couple of, I think, changes that need to be made to the 25th. I believe it's on the last page. I believe it's fifth paragraph down. It says Gutierrez motioned to void the previous vote. I believe it should say motioned to strike the previous vote. That was, that was what was part of the record. And I have a question for the city attorney actually pertaining to that. And I have just some concern about how the minutes should reflect the striking of, of prior public commute or public, I guess, discussion that occurred at the dais, given that a motion to strike was voted on? Does that mean that everything prior to that should be taken out of the minutes?
It would just undo the vote.
My understanding of it, and I, I looked through the Roberts rules. I couldn't find anything called a motion to strike. I understand it as, as an evidentiary procedure as an attorney. And when you strike something from the record, that means it is no longer part of the record. I obviously have concerns about how that would reflect from a, a public, open meeting laws perspective. But that was what the majority voted on, and that was the language that was voted on. It wasn't void, it was to strike.
My understanding is that the intent may have not matched the words. However, the record is out there. The meeting is recorded and available for the public, and that does not get stricken. That is not destroyed.
So, but should the minutes reflect that it doesn't exist?
No, the minutes just would reflect the motion as presented.
Right. I, I feel like we're going around in circles, and that's my concern, is that we voted on a motion to strike something from the record as, as opposed to void, which is what it does say. And I just want to make sure that, that the, that the record is clear for the public. So, you know, to the extent that, I don't know what the intent was, but ultimately, that was the language that was used. That was very precise language that was used. That's part of the record, so it should say strike, but I, I don't know what to do with it beyond that.
And technically, you are correct that the Roberts rules does not have a motion to strike. However, I, I believe the intent was to undo the vote is what I understood. And I believe that was what was the intent of the, of the body. But again, if this is not ready to be adopted, we can, you can act on the minutes of the July 9th without acting on the June 25th to go back and double check. And if staff needs additional time to go back and double check to see what, what was actually said. And that's what the minutes are, just to reflect what was said at the meeting and what was said.
Okay. I mean, that was, it's, it's a small change, I guess. If, if, so long as the intention is that the public knows what, what happened, I guess, then it just should reflect that it was a motion to strike. That was the language, so I think that's what it should read. And then with regard to, let's see, I want to just make sure. There was another motion that was, that was referenced in here. I think it was after that that said, let's see. There's a counter motion to agendize, and it's literally the, I believe it's the second, or excuse me, it'd be the, the third page of the, of the minutes. It says Gutierrez counter motion to reconsider previous motion and vote. Agenda is providing the Planning Commission to copy the CUP resolution with conditions of approval for the Five Star Inn and for staff to present calls for service. I, I just have, I just have a question, and I, and I don't know if this is, if this is out of order, but I'm, I'm trying to determine, I, I read later on, there are staff recommendations that went with the, with the ultimate motion that was voted on, and I did not see that as part of the motion. So I, I don't know if we should clarify that there was no, there was no request to staff for direction in the minutes, or whether or not that's something, that's something to bring up later on.
I'll bring it up later on.
Okay. I, I just want to make sure it's, that the record is clear, because it's, it appears that, it appears that public notice seems to be incongruent with what we actually voted on, and that's my biggest concern. So if, if, if that's not an issue, it should just be amended to say, to strike the previous vote in the, what is it, the fifth paragraph down on the last paragraph, or on the last page of the June 25th, 2024 minutes.
And I'll also just say, if city staff could review the video again to get the act, the actual words that were stated at that meeting, because I don't believe I used the term strike. And in, in, in law, as we all know, void and strike are two legal different definitions.
So if the Commission is not ready to vote on the minutes for the June 25th, but wants to approve the minutes for the July 9th one, you can separate the two and do a motion for that.
Okay, so at this time, we're going to pull the minutes from the June 25th, 2024 meeting, and they'll be brought back at a later date. And we will go ahead and move forward on approving the July 9th, 2024 minutes of the Planning Commission. Any more further comments?
Do we need a motion for that?
It can be either a motion or by unanimous consent.
We can do a motion. Joanne, would you do the roll call?
Was that a motion by a chair?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a second? This is as to the July 9 minutes, am I correct?
Correct.
I'll second that.
Okay. Commissioner Becerra?
Aye.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hang?
Aye.
Commissioner Lewis?
Aye.
Chair Williams?
Aye.
Motion passes. Chair, if I may, for, for Commissioner Gutierrez, for, as a clarification on your comment regarding the July, the June 25th meeting minutes, did he, for that particular motion, did he want staff to look, to review the, the video and write your verbatim motion, or?
Yeah, I think the verbatim, the, I think according to the Roberts orders, just, yeah, whatever I indicated at the meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for the clarification.
Now, we're moving to oral communications. Anyone who would like to address the Planning Commission at this time on an item which is not on the agenda, you'd be welcome to do so now. On an item that's not on the agenda.
Nice to meet you all. My name is Johnny Figueroa. Sorry. Oh, that's cool. Today, my family and I were traveling southbound on California. As we crossed through Cameron, a person in a red car spread through the red light going eastbound on Cameron. If it were not for my papa's quick reaction and our vehicle's decent brakes, that reckless driver and my family could have been seriously hurt or worse, killed. For the record, my family is, myself, a 30-year-old software engineer who grew up here and graduated from California Elementary, Edgewood Middle, and West Covina High School, and got most of a computer engineering degree at UC San Diego, currently living and working at, in San Diego. My sister, an 11-year-old entering Edgewood Middle School, having finished up in West Cove and California Elementary Schools. My mama, a young lady in her late 60s, who has dedicated her whole life to raising her children and her children's children. And my papa, a young man in his late 60s, who has done much the same. My papa is a hero, but he should not have had to have been one today. He's getting older, his reaction time won't always work in our favor like it did today. But he has no other option. He needs to drive to remain independent and live with dignity. And cars can only get so safe when they can travel at high speeds. When the time comes, they may need to leave the city to protect their independence and safety, abandoning the community to live somewhere that allows true freedom of choice in how we get around. That is why I'm here to urge the, the city to rethink our, the strategy in how we transport the people of West Covina. Our families and friends deserve safe, human-centered, attractive streets, and safe, efficient, undistracted roads. What we have today are frankly unattractive, unsafe roads that try to do it all, and despite all efforts inevitably lead to heavy traffic, high maintenance costs, tragic collisions, and a never-ending cycle of expanding parking and adding lanes while making walking, cycling, and other transport options less and less appealing. As I have learned today, traffic signals are not protection. Stop signs, slowdown signs, and school zone signs are not protection. When you put people in cars and give them wide, straight lanes, you inevitably create situations like the one that could have destroyed my family today, because there was nothing to stop that person from speeding through a red light. The car-centric city is unsustainable financially and is way too dangerous to do basic tasks like shopping, going to school, and enjoying our parks and amenities. We cannot put traffic enforcement on every corner, and even if we did, there's still nothing in the way of someone barreling through a wide, straight line in their two-ton vehicles. My suggestion is to define Cameron as either a road, AKA a breezy, car-based thoroughfare, or a street, AKA a human-centered destination. Because if we want people to drive quickly on a road, we do not need constant pedestrian crossings, red light intersections, parked cars, and parking lot ramps that mix fast and slow traffic. This design is incredibly frustrating, dangerous, and stressful to travel through. And if we want Cameron to be a place for the community to shop, eat, walk, play, learn, and live peacefully, then we don't need cars racing through it at 40-plus miles per hour. Introduce traffic calming measures that physically present, prevent careless, reckless, or inattentive drivers from risking their lives and the lives of others. These measures may include narrowed lanes, wide medians with trees, and curving paths that prevent people from just flying through and risking the lives of others. For Cameron and California specifically, a sign won't be enough. It's a straight path on either side and only a slight curve before the light. Drivers have no physical reason to slow down. It needs to go on a road diet. As an example, consider establishing a roundabout pattern throughout Cameron or other streets. We tried this in San Diego in the Bird Rock community. This technique reduced collisions by 90%, greatly improved pedestrian safety, and increased retail sales by 30%. For the sections between, narrow the lanes and consider adding a median with lovely trees and nature. Maybe even add some gentle curvature to the street. If Cameron needs to transport people quickly, remove parking and close off access to it from parking lots in most streets. Add protected cycling paths that are wide enough for emergency vehicles. I fear for my family, because every single day, they need to get in a car and drive to do literally anything outside their house. The alternatives are untenable. Walking is subject to intense weather and crossing massive, dangerous streets. Public transport requires long waits and walking long distances, which is already a danger. Cycling is too dangerous, because you can be right, but it doesn't matter if you're dead. Growing up, our children are essentially told, "Okay, little Timmy, it's time to cross the street. Remember to look both ways, or you could die." And this is, this is normal. But maybe, maybe it doesn't have to be normal. So, thank you guys for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you for your comment. We have another comment.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm here tonight because of conflicts and liabilities that Commissioner Gutierrez's actions have created for the city. As many may not be aware, every Commissioner in the City of West Covina signs a Commissioner Handbook that details the responsibilities and the rules that govern behavior and actions of Commissioners. This handbook is in place to educate Commissioners of their duties, but also to protect the city in the case that a Commissioner violates those rules, leaving the city vulnerable to lawsuits. It is highly problematic that during his four years on the Planning Commission, Commissioner Gutierrez is the only individual to refuse to sign the handbook and adhere to the city's guidelines and rules. This fits a pattern of behavior throughout Commissioner Gutierrez's career that again places the city in a vulnerable situation regarding tonight's agenda. As a Planning Commissioner and as a candidate for City Council, Commissioner Gutierrez is aware of our city's code regarding election season signs and non-commercial signs. Code Section 26-100 was clearly presented to every candidate, and yet if you drive to the ARCO on 1333 West Merced Avenue, you will see a banner in clear violation of the city code. It is obviously problematic that a Planning Commissioner sworn to apply the city's codes to businesses and residents fairly would intentionally violate the code when it is in his interests. But it rises to a level above unethical behavior to cronyism, when the very same ARCO that agreed to violate the city code now stands in front of the very Planning Commission that Commissioner Gutierrez has a vote asking for a permit to sell alcohol. I would ask Commissioner Gutierrez to recuse himself, but I understand he lacks the ethics to do so. His decision to intentionally violate our code is more problematic and creates more liability for the city when we come to the item regarding the Five Star Inn. I remind the Commission of the comments made by Commissioner Gutierrez in the July 3rd issue of the San Gabriel Valley Tribune, where he stated, "Do not award bad behavior to a hotel operator who has allowed criminal conduct to occur on their lot." Again, I remind this Commission that he made these comments in his role as a Planning Commissioner. He proclaimed that he was the catalyst for the investigation of the Five Star CUP without any facts regarding the CUP of the Five Star Inn. At the time, I requested that, given his bias, that Commissioner Gutierrez recuse himself from voting on this item. Given his disregard for city guidelines, codes, and laws, I do not see how any vote taken by Commissioner Gutierrez going forward does not open the city to liability. Ultimately, it is extremely disappointing that our city manager, Paulina Morales, and our city attorney, Tom Duarte, have allowed for the intentional violation of city ordinances, guidelines, and laws to be consistently violated by Commissioner Gutierrez with no repercussions. It reveals a systemic failure within City Hall, which has led to the city paying millions out in lawsuits and millions more projected in the future. Lastly, I will close by sharing what I've shared with football players every game night for over 20 years. We don't whine about the officials. We adjust, we adapt, we play by the rules that officials have decided to enforce or turn a blind eye to, regardless of what's written down. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. We're now closing the open oral communications at this time, and we're now moving forward with our agenda. This evening, we have conditional use permit number 24-04. The applicant is Valerie Sala Pezy, and the location is 1333 West Merced Avenue. Joanne, who will be giving the report at this time?
Our planning intern, Moises Lamelli, will be presenting. It will be his first time presenting with the Planning Commission.
Oh, okay. Welcome aboard.
Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening, Honorable Chair. This presentation is for conditional use permit number 24-04 for ARCO at 1333 West Merced Avenue. I'd like to give a little bit of background about this project. The CUP is being requested for the sale of beer and wine within the convenience store. The zone of the subject site, which the store is located in, is neighborhood commercial mixed use, and the location of the store is on the corner of South Sunset and West Merced Avenue. In regards to surrounding uses, the surrounding uses are commercial and residential. Here we have an existing and recent photo of the site at 1333 West Merced Avenue. Here is depicted the convenience store as well as the service station. Next, we have the site plan, which was provided by the applicant. The convenience store for which the alcohol sales will occur will be shaded in red on the site plan. Moving forward, we have the floor plan, which was also provided by the applicant. There are three coolers indicated by their blue coloring, and there are two bulk displays indicated by the red coloring. The hatched areas at the entrance as well as the register indicate the required minimum five-feet distance for those displays and coolers to be located from. The red arrows from the coolers as well as the bulk displays indicate the distance from themselves to the entrance, and which are at least more than five feet away from the entrance and the register. For the business operation, the operation will continue as a service station as well as a convenience store. There will be six employees for the convenience store, and the business hours are 24 hours a day and seven days a week. However, alcohol sales will be limited between 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. Moving forward, we have the census tract for which the site is located in. The census tract number is 406-7.02. This area, however, is located within an area of undue concentration, meaning that this area is allowed for four off-sale alcohol licenses. However, there are currently five. Those five being Jerry's House of Spirits, 7-Eleven, CVS, Vons, and HQ HK2. In additions for, in addition for your reference, there is a Chevron across the street from the ARCO. However, this is located within a different census tract, which received an approval for a CUP for an ABC license as well. Based upon the project information, planning staff recommends adopting Resolution Number 24-6150, approving conditional use permit number 24-04. Thank you, I'm available for questions, and we have the applicant here as well.
Are there any questions for staff from the Commissioners at this time? Hearing none, we'll now be opening the public hearing. Our first speaker we have is the applicant, Mr. Suker. Would you like to come forward?
Good evening, Chairperson, Commissioner, city staff. So yeah, applied for the ABC CUP approval for my ARCO station as per the review by the Planning Commission. And so, will comply with all the laws and all the, or the code that is already there. So, just ask for, you know, approval or any question you might have, I'm willing to answer, so. That's all I can say, I'll comply with law, then. It's just city laws and now, and I would like to serve my customer that are already demanding, due to available at the other sites. So I'd like to serve my customer with beer and wine as they wish. And like I said, I comply with all the laws that the city will impose on me. Is there any further question the city or Commissioner might have for me?
Then we'll go around the Commission. Commissioner Becerra, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Not at this time.
Commissioner Hang?
Not at this time.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Uh, I think that's maybe a trick question for staff. I also understand there's going to be flock cameras at this location to help with public safety and making sure the community is safer at this location in general. Can you explain what the flock camera system is and how it benefits the community?
The, the flock camera is a condition, is one, is rated in the draft resolution as one of the conditions of approval. It's also a requirement in the city's municipal code for, for uses involving conditional use permits for, for service stations that sell alcohol for off-site consumption. Flock cameras are essentially cameras that have, that are able to, to read license plates, and it is integrated with, with our, I guess, they, they work with our police department.
Great, thank you.
Can I say something about the flock camera?
Go right ahead.
Yeah, so flock cameras, they scan any vehicle that goes in front of it. It scans for a license plate, scans for logos on the vehicle, make and model. It makes up all the information, builds into file. And at the same time, it runs with the CODAD system. You know, if the car is wanted or cars in the system is wanted, then it will call, it will let alert to the police department, as well as on my email as well. And also, addition to that, I have four cameras on site already, which also reads the license plate of every vehicle that comes through the station and leaves this station, and we keep that record for months on site. And the same thing, it does scans for any logo on the vehicle, make and model, and license plate. But it doesn't run through any system, it's just the private record that I have on CCT TV and on the NVR now, not DVR anymore. So that's, it's, it's helping us a lot to identify, you know, if there's any trouble or future problem, or we're looking for some cars. You can search for, by the license plate, you can search for, by the make and model and color of the vehicle. So we're really good technology.
Okay. Commissioner Lewis, do you have any questions for the applicant?
No, not at this time.
Thank you. I have two more cards from our audience who would like to speak on this item. First is Citizen Brian Calderon Tabatabai. You're good? Okay. Johnny Figueroa. Going for the second time, I have a card from Johnny Figueroa. Okay, seeing none?
I'll pull out a card.
Okay.
I just have. Good evening, Commission, One Kennedy. I just have one thing to say. When I was on, when we went through all this, we, we only allowed one flock camera. There were like $400, $500 a month, I think too is excessive. Just something to think about. Thank you. Oh, by the way, your constitutional rights trump any, any handbook, just so you know. I've already been down that road.
If you would, please grab a card and, well, thank you. Okay. At this time, I'll be closing the planning, the public hearing. Okay, discussion among the commissioners, starting with Commissioner Lewis. Have any comments? Okay. Commissioner Guterres?
I'll just make a brief comment in regards to the mayor's comments earlier regarding my conflict here. I'm glad to say that I did get FPPC clearance to participate in this meeting because there's no conflict at all. I did not accept any donations or contributions from the applicant. So unlike the mayor, I follow the law and the Fair Political Practice Commission, which regulates fairness and campaign regulations indicates that I could participate today. So that's all, thank you.
Commissioner Bessera, do you have any comments?
No, I believe the applicant has already made a previous application, and this is not the same location. So he's already a longtime business owner in the city of West Covina, and he's well aware from the previous meeting what are requirements and has already endured our proceedings in the matter. So I believe, no, no questions are necessary.
Commissioner Hang?
No questions currently.
Okay. At this time, I don't have any further questions. Stat, commissioners, are you ready for the vote? Would someone like to make the motion? Do we have anyone that has? I, the public hearing's been closed. So again, would someone like to make the motion for this item?
I will motion to approve.
Okay, do we have a second for the motion? Seeing none, this motion fails.
Oh my God. Well, you should call the commissioners to see if they had a second. If no one's going to second, I'll second it.
Point of order, that motion fails.
Point of order, city attorney, can you clarify? She didn't ask each commissioner if they wanted to second it before she made that gavel hit, I would have seconded it.
So if that motion failed, another motion can be made, so anyone else can make another motion.
Okay, so based upon my understanding from city staff, based upon the city council's decision, the mayor's decision to authorize alcohol sales in our local gas stations, the planning commission has no choice but to make decisions based upon what the council voted on and.
I'll make a motions to approve.
And I'll go ahead and second it.
Point of order. You've made your motion, and your motion is?
Who made a motion? Her or me?
You're making a motion, a new motion, right? So what is your motion that's on the floor?
Actually, I made the motions to approve just now.
So I just made a second.
Okay. Joanne, did you get that?
Yes.
Okay. Will you please do the roll call vote?
Commissioner Bessera? Aye. Commissioner Lewis?
I'm concerned about potential conflicts of interest by at least one member of this audience abstaining.
Commissioner Guterres?
Just so the public knows, our mayor likes to lie, but um.
Order.
So I'm only on my matter here. The city attorney has a email from the Federal Political Practice Commission that indicates I have no conflict, and so Tabatabai continues to lie like he always does, but yes.
Vice Chair Hang?
Aye.
Chair Williams?
No.
Motion passes. Moving on now to our next public hearing item, number three. It's to review, the review of an unclassified use permit number three, four, eight. The permitee is Roger DeSanti, and the address is 2748 East Garvey Avenue South, and it's the Five Star Inn. Joanne, who will be presenting this report?
Chair, I will be presenting to this report, and also to clarify, this item is a non-public hearing item. It is not a public hearing item. Okay, good evening, chair, members of the public, and also the planning commission. On June 26th, 2024, the planning commission voted 3-2 to include this review of the Five Star Inn UUP conditions of approval.
I have a point of order. Madam Chair, I have a point of order pertaining to the title of this item, which is review of unclassified use permit numbers three, 48 and three, 48 Rev. 1. That was not what was voted on. There was very specifically a request for a report pertaining to obtaining a copy of the CUP as well as getting a copy of any calls for service pertaining to this particular property. There was no call for a review of the permit. Nothing along those lines was agreed upon. I remember, I motioned for that particular discussion to occur. That was voted down. So ultimately, I don't think that we can go forward with having a full-on discussion about this item when that was not what was, when that was not what was agreed upon by this body. And the fact that there are recommendations from staff that are provided in, in, in a manner which was not solicited by the motion, unless staff is initiating this on their own, and, and I'm happy to hear out staff on this. If this is a staff-initiated thing, or this came from, from on high from the council, that's perfectly fine. I totally understand that. But my understanding is that this came back to us by virtue of the fact that we voted, the, the majority of this body voted to have a report provided to us.
That is correct. I, I will be providing a report. I mean, if the, the words review shouldn't, if, if you feel that it's not the right word, then they apologize for that, but it, this is a presentation, and I'll go ahead and clarify that in the presentation.
That, that's a, that's a very, that's a very wide distinction, because if it's merely a report, if it's merely informational, that's one thing, and that's what was called for by this body. If it's a review, you are, you're effectively putting somebody under the microphone as if they're on trial here, and this isn't a public hearing. That's my concern about this. And I, I think, I, I think that this is sort of an overstep in terms of what was provided. And, and, and again, I, I think we ought to make that very clear to the members of the public, because ultimately, this body acts in a quasi judicial manner, and ultimately, we can't just go out there and just say, we're going, we're going to review so-and-so's property when we're only asking for an informational report. I think that that's insanely problematic, particularly when it comes down to the fact that somebody who, who is subject to our, our whims, our review, conceivably is going to have to hire an attorney to come here and advocate for them. That's, that's not what we should be doing. If we, if we are going to call into question someone, we should give them the opportunity to speak and be heard. And that's not what this, that's not what this body voted for. That's my problem with it.
Actually, I'm here too, and as part of the body, and as staff, which just stated earlier, before we even begin this whole meeting, that it is a non-public hearing items. So we are here tonight just to listen and to look at some of the materials that will be presented, but we are not making any decisions tonight. It is a non-public hearing items.
And I, I agree with that.
We will not be voting, or we will not having any discussion because the public is not here.
To, Chair, if I may?
Right ahead.
Okay, so this, I am, I will be delivering a presentation on this item. This is not, this is not an action item. It's not a public hearing item. I will be providing information to the planning commission, and, and if, if the planning commission decides to take action on, on this conditional use permit or UUP in the future, then it would follow the, the correct due process. This is not that item tonight.
And I, I want to, I want to make sure I understand. So if, so if, if we get this report, we can decide to take action on this report, and therefore, this is an action item. I want to just, I want to just make that clear. This is an action item, correct?
I think the action contemplated in the report and the staff recommendation is to receive and file and to get directions from the planning commission on the next step. My understanding is that this is not on for a review or revocation or like, like a formal divestiture of vested rights in property. That is not my understanding, and I don't believe that is the intent of this presentation, but the receive and file is still an action item. So the, the presentation will be made by staff, but this is not a review, as in review for revocation and to pull away from the business owner or property owner, any of the vested rights in that UUP. This is not a UUP revocation hearing. And if that was to come in the future, there absolutely are notice requirements, there are due process considerations, which I had raised previously, that we will follow the law and all of the necessary notice requirements to the owner of the business, to the, you know, to all of the stakeholders. I mean, it might not be just one person, so to all of the proper due process considerations of making sure there is notice, there is opportunity to be heard before any action is taken on the UUP. Today, the action, the recommendation essentially is to give direction of what this planning commission would like to do and receive and file, but the receive and file is still, we would still need a motion to take a receive and file.
I, I disagree with the characterization, because ultimately, you're effectively having us make a probable cause determination as to whether or not we're going to move forward and review, suspend, or revoke a UUP. That's exactly what's on the agenda.
Point of order. This commission, if I recall correctly, did not.
Point of order.
I have a point of order. So can I comment?
Point of order. Go ahead.
I'm going to respond to that, if I may, just, sorry. The, the recommendation is take one of the, one of the following. It could simply be a receive and file today, and no further steps can be taken if the planning commission, after hearing the presentation of whatever information is coming as far as the status of, you know, calls, et cetera. If after that, beyond the receive and file, you wish to give direction, that is the prerogative of the planning commission as to, we want to wait and see, or we want to have this come back, we want to begin a formal review. That's within the purview of this planning commission as to what you want to be the next step. But the one piece that does happen today is the receive and file, because it is a presentation.
So I, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, I want to understand the process by which staff made a determination to put recommendations outside of, outside of receive and file, which, which did not include any of the suggestions that I made at, at the second to last meeting. I, I'm trying to figure out why there are only certain positions that are presented to the council as potential options, or excuse me, not the council, the commission as potential options. I want to understand how the sausage is made.
Sausage is made because we motioned to agendize this.
Yeah.
Point of order.
So point of order, can I get, let me just get my turn. Can I get my turn to speak? Because we're going back and forth here, and I have something to say that will benefit them out.
Point of order.
Okay, go ahead.
Would, Joanne, would you like to respond to the question that was raised?
That's a legal question. That should go to the city attorney to respond.
Point of order.
So when, when the report was written and those, those options were presented, those are specific options that are actually, that are given, that are written in the city's municipal code, although the option that, that you, Commissioner Lewis, had presented to staff is an option that the planning commission can take. It's not specifically written in the city's municipal code, so it's not something that, that, that I thought of, but it's certainly something that, that can be presented to tonight's, during tonight's planning commission meeting.
Will it be presented as part of your presentation?
I can go ahead and say that, say that at the end.
Okay.
If you'd like.
Brian?
Okay, so if I recall correctly, this commission, Commissioner Lewis's motion failed, but the, the motion that passed was to review conditions of approval for Five Star Inn and to get a calls for service for this location for, for possible review and possible revocation, if I remember correctly from the meeting. So the review, it says review on classified use permit. That's correct. We are reviewing their conditions of approval like this commission voted on, and that this commission has a responsibility in conducting itself in reviewing an applicant's conditions of approval. No members of this commission has made any determination at all that the owner or the property, they're bad people, not at all. This commission has not voted on any sort of matter relating to that, including myself. Today is to make a determination and review the facts that city staff and the West Covina Police Department will present today. So the review of this permit is correct, because that's what this commission voted on at the last meeting.
Chair? Okay, Rosemary?
So if tonight, at the very, very least, there's a presentation and this commission receives and files, not all of the things that will happen has to happen at the same meeting. So it is possible that we can have steps along the way to get to that, you know, the, the complete review of the conditions and, and actually, you know, bring the business owner in, provide notice, and say, we are going to review your compliance with it. I think that is a different type of hearing, but whether it all happens at the same meeting, I don't know that that has to happen that way, but today is, was, I believe, intended, is my understanding, to be informational, to provide that information that was requested as to the status of what has been happening at the property. So a part of that is happening today, and I'm not sure that all of it's going to happen at one meeting. So today is one piece of that, and it is the presentation that will be received and filed as to this commission. But again, the information has not been provided to you yet, so as far as I know, that was the intent.
And there's a, and there's a, there's a. She's answering my questions, since we're still on the same.
Point, point of order.
So unless, you know, unless the, if the commission does not want to act on anything other than just receive and file, that is adequate for today, because the presentation will provide the information that was requested as to police activity, code enforcement activity, and things that are happening or has happened on the property that was requested. So that information is coming back to you as is made available today. So not everything is happening all at once, and it doesn't have to happen all at once. Today's piece that will happen for sure is the receive and file of the presentation of information. So I'm not sure whether the title of it could have been better and, and what the intent was, but today, the, the bottom line is a receive and file for the information that was requested. So we have a member from Code Enforcement Department as well as the Police Department to provide that information to you in addition to Joanne here. So that was my understanding of the intent for today.
And, and then just go back to my question. And if I'm not mistaken, city attorney, assistant city attorney, we don't know what this commission is going to vote today. We don't know what action this commission will do today, but whatever action it does take, there's a due process. take, there's a due process. Uh, so, uh, whatever, we don't know. We don't know what decision this commission is going to take today. So we can, you can give advice on what that due process is yet, but there is a due process on whatever decision this commission makes today, depending on the decision it does make, correct?
Correct. So prior to any revocation or alterations of conditions or, you know, findings that you make and just, you know, findings of violations, et cetera, that will all happen at a, a noticed meeting where the applicant or, not the applicant, um, the, the operator, the permit holder has the opportunity to understand what, um, they need to answer to and they will have the chance to, um, obtain counsel and be present to state their side. And today, this is just a, what I understand is a status update kind of as to what is happening and that's part of the information that this body has requested of staff. So today's piece is the informational piece. So it is up to your, your discretion if you just want to go for receive and file today of those recommendations and say, we leave the rest of it alone and we don't act on anything other than receive and file. That is absolutely within your, your discretion.
Um, I just want to make a point that, you know, I mean, obviously not to mention the other business, you know, but there are, uh, allegedly negligent business owners that have had multiple, you know, actually more than multiple, many complaints. And it's not, I don't know if it's been brought to staff's or, you know, attention or it's, you know, there's no, nothing implemented, no protocol for, to receive this information. Um, you know, obviously I, I did request that someone from law enforcement come and present this. It, and you know, it's got no bearing on, you know, there's, there's no, um, you know, you know, we don't have anything against this, this, the Five Star Hotel. This would be for any business and, you know, I would even request that we agendize any business that we have right now in the city that isn't, you know, has, uh, you know, our police department, you know, babysitting them. You know, being their security, free security and, you know, all the calls, you know, 271 calls, you know, is, you know, just unacceptable. You know, we need to get all this information and we're not here, you know, to, um, and we have to remember, we're not here to protect violators. We're here to protect our residents. So in that being said, that's, that's all I have to say.
Joanne?
Okay, I'll go ahead and move, um, continue on with the presentation. So the, the Five Star Inn is, is located on the south side of, of Beast Garvey Avenue and is adjacent to Crestview Cadillac to the west, Days Inn to the east and the Walnut Creek Wash to the south. The closest residential property is across the wash approximately 64 feet. Um, the, the unclassified use permit, um, number three 48 was initially approved in December 1987 for a 76 unit motel, including the manager quarter unit. A revision was made in April 1989 that reduced the number of units from 76 to 75 and this also includes the manager quarter unit. Um, just, um, I'd like the commission to note that the unclassified use permit is what the city used to call conditional use permits. The, the name of the entitlement has changed from unclassified use permit to conditional use permit, which is, uh, the term that is currently used. I, I all, I provided a copy of both, um, unclassif, the initial unclassified use permit and also the, the revision in the planning commission packet. Um, on.
Question?
Sure.
With regard to the changeover from UUPS to CUPS, what, what is the, uh, what, what municipal code section dictates that?
Yeah. So it, as far as the old ordinance, um, prior, I, I don't remem, I don't, I didn't get any records on, I didn't pull any records on when the change had happened, um, but I can go ahead and look into it.
That's good. Thank you.
And I'll, I'll report back. Um, on the projector is photographs of the current site that were, that, um, was taken today. The front of the Five Star Inn, um, in the, in the middle of the lot, towards the, towards the building on the east side, um, the building on the west side and also the rear of the property at the bottom. As far as code enforcement cases are concerned, there has been eight, there has been eight open code enforcement cases since 2020. However, um, there is currently one open case, um, that was, that has been open since May 3rd, 2023 and that, that deals with property maintenance issues, illegal, an illegal dumpster, which is an unfranchised dumpster, um, an abandoned boat, inoperable vehicle and permitted construction in long-term residence. Um, the, most of the issues have been addressed. Um, in this, this particular case that had opened, um, code enforcement typically keeps open until, for example, if an unpermitted construction has been permitted, they don't close that particular case until the, the construction has been finalized. So whenever somebody, whenever, um, a case is open, um, it includes, sometimes includes numerous violations within that certain case. And whenever somebody calls to report a new violation, um, if there's an open violation, then some, that, then the new violation gets added to it. Um, it, although some violations are addressed, the new violation get, also gets added to the open violation. So that case remains open. The unpermitted construction in this case has already been permitted, um, and the pending are still the long-term residence and also the construction waiting to get finalized. The co, um, the code enforcement officer, um, uh, ma, like director is here at the, at the planning commission meeting. He'll be able to answer any of the planning commission's questions. Um, these are photographs of the open cases, um, and all of these cases have been addressed. First photograph shows construction that was done in, in the ba, in the bathrooms. There, there were, there was interior remodel that was being done without permits, um, and now permits have been pulled. The top photograph is photographed with the bathroom, um, as observed without permits. And then the bottom photograph are, is work that was already completed in the renovation process when, when the case was opened. Um, in, in the case of the bedroom, there were unpermitted electrical work that was being done. Flooring and pa, and basic painting does not require permit. Um, there have been, um, trash observed on the property, the non-op, non-operative vehicles and also broken windows. And again, all, all of these have been already addressed. Here are photographs of the most recent code enforcement cases that occurred within the last couple of months, um, and all have already been addressed. Um, the graffiti, um, there was a abandoned boat on site, it has already, which has already been removed. And on the top right was taken on the 12th, um, which trash, but today, um, I took pictures and that trash is no longer there. So it was taken on the 12th, but trash day, I believe, was today. So that all got taken care of. Um, on the projector is the information that was provided by the police department for calls of service statistics from January 1st to December 31st, 2023. Um, the, um, the police department representative, Tony Cortina, is available to answer any of the planning commission's questions regarding the calls for service. As far as, um, tonight's presentation, um, that this, uh, if the planning commission has any questions for, for the code enforcement office, um, director or Tony Cortina, um, they are available to answer any questions for code enforcement in the police department. Um, with this, uh, my presentation, uh, it concludes my presentation. Um, the, this presentation is to receive and file, however, um, at, as intended, um, the staff wanted to notify the planning commission that the planning commission does have options. The, those options may include, um, to direct staff to agendize, um, to agendize a future review, um, of the UUP and to con, to essentially consider modification or revocation of the UUP. Another option is to direct staff to agendize a resolution to, to obtain guidance from the city council that, um, if the planning commission would like the city counts, if the, sorry, if the city council would like the planning commission to take action or review this particular, um, unclassified use permit.
Thank you, Joanne. Um, yes, we probably, the commissioners may have questions, um, from the code enforcement, um, director as well as from the police officer. We can start with the police officer.
Good evening, Chairman Gutierrez and members of the commission. My name is Tony Cortina and I'm a captain with the West Covina Police Department. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
One question that I had regarding the, um, calls of service, I noticed that, um, some of the calls of service had to do with 911 calls or domestic violence calls. Um, kind of, it was a mixture of different calls. Regarding the 271, all of those occurred between January 2023 and to December 31st, 2023? When it came to, I guess, traffic stops, was it a case where the officer may have pulled over someone that, that happened to be near that location or were they physically at the site?
Um, from looking at the statistics that you all have, um, it looks like about 30% of the statistics are self-initiated, which means the officer maybe did conduct a traffic stop at, at the location with either in front of or inside the parking lot. Um, some of the suspicious persons, suspicious vehicles, um, could also be self-initiated if the officer was driving through and sees any suspicious activity. So in general, um, although not all motels have high crime rates, um, you know, they, motels in general can be susceptible to certain types of criminal activities, um, such as drug-related offenses, prostitution, theft, vandalism and sometimes violent crimes. So our police officers, uh, proactively patrol these areas, um, as a regular practice.
Okay, thank you.
Is the, is the number of calls for service at this location higher or, or, or where, where is it in the range of, of other motels within the city limits?
I, I have some, uh, other comparables I could share with you if you'd like.
Sure.
So there were 271 calls for service at the Five Star between that period. Uh, at the Days Inn, which is next door, there was 167 calls. Uh, the Wayside Motel, there was, uh, 56 and at the Hampton Inn, 35. Um, and again, there's a lot of variables, you know, such as the location, the size of the property, the number of rooms and so forth that play a role into the, into the, uh, types of calls and the number of calls for service.
Are they, are they comparable in size to the lesser violations, lesser calls? Like Hampton Inn has quite a few rooms.
Yeah, the Hampton Inn does not have near as much, uh, proactive policing because again, it's, you, the officers would have to get out of their vehicles and walk through the hallways of the, it's actually more of a hotel than a motel.
I just meant comparable in size.
Um, I don't know the exact number of rooms at either location, to be honest with you. They're both decent sized, um, properties.
Would we be able to get copies of those?
Absolutely. And I also have, um, regarding your question with the statistics, I have, um, the same number of, or data from January of, uh, 2024 to August 12th of this year as well. And I can read those numbers too, if you'd like, from the same, um, locations.
Please do.
Yes.
Uh, from the Five Star Inn, it was 148 total incidents. The Days Inn was 91. And I have the, uh, Wayside, no calls for service and the Hampton was 31.
Within this, within the 148 calls, uh, how many of them were found on these?
I'm not able to determine that just based on that.
Okay. Uh, in, in, and from this year and last year, um, has there been any fatalities at this whole time?
I'm not aware of any fatalities.
How many arrests have been made?
I'd have to get the, the arrest data for you guys as well.
Okay. Any, um, any traffic citations? Do you know that number?
I, I can get all those specific things that you guys request. I'd be more than happy to get all that for you. I just have the general, um, types of calls we were on and then the, uh, total number. But any other specific, um, data you'd like, I'd be more than happy to, uh, to get for you.
Um, other question I have is how many, are, are any of these duplicate calls or are these all the, the same? Or are they all, uh, singular incidents?
Each one's its own incident.
So let's say hypothetically, somebody sees, somebody steals something or something like that and there are five people who see it and they all call in. Is that, i- is that all one call for service here or is that five separate calls for service?
It would be one call for service.
Okay, all right.
It's based on the incident, not the number of reporting persons.
So 271, uh, calls or incidents, that is 5.2 a week or 20.8 per month. I mean, that is excessive. You know, am I correct?
Well, I, I don't know about excessive. It's a, it is a large number of calls.
Yeah. So, I mean, being that, you know, I mean, I think even the Days Inn has, has quite a few. So, I mean, we are, we have disturbances, 33, extra patrol, 46. So extra patrol means police who could be, um, you know, doing other things. It sounds to me like free security.
An extra patrol would be an officer, um, dispatching himself as extra patrolling the area. And again, they're proactively looking for any sort of, um, criminal element or providing visual deterrents.
Well, I'm sure he's, they're there because there's lots to look for.
There, there can be, absolutely. Again, uh, just the nature of, of motels and the, and the crime rates associated with, with motels and, uh, the fact that, uh, you know, we, we, it's easy for people involved in criminal activities to stay there and conduct business and leave without, it's much safer for them to do so than at the.
In your opinion, in your opinion, what are the practices that attract those type of violators or, or people who commit, you know, crimes or the incident, you know, that, what, what attracts this type of excessive, uh, incidents, I guess you can call it, or calls? I mean, what is it that can be implemented, um, to curb this? Obviously they're not going to be able to get rid of everything, but what, what is the major?
One of the ways we curb it is through the proactive policing. I mean, because, you know, anybody can, with an ID card can check into a motel. And so the business owners or. And so the business owners or even the police, we can't determine who's going to check into a hotel or motel ahead of time. So again, we just try, we work well with hotel or motel staffs. And, you know, again, we, aside from calls for service, we spend proactive time just ensuring that people see us there. Again, whether it's we're contacting people we see in the parking lots or just the fact that a criminal element can see our police cars in there and it deters them, that's the way that we deal with those types of issues.
Whether hotels or motels have a flock cameras installed in their location, I believe the Holiday Inn has one on both entryways and exitways, is that correct?
To my knowledge, just the Holiday Inn.
Okay.
Now, if we were to remove just the extra patrol from the 271, now does extra patrol go there because there is an incident or they just go?
No, it's just on their own.
Okay.
Between these last, between this year and last year, has there been gang activity at this location?
I can't specifically tell you, but I know, I know that we have arrested gang members at these locations, yes.
Do you know if any of them were for felony convictions or warrants?
It's not uncommon to have people that are wanted for crimes stay at motels.
Okay. Do you have any suggestions on how we prevent gang members from checking into hotels?
Well, I think what the police department is doing now, as far as, you know, our police tactics, again, it's high visibility, good working relationships with the management of the motels. But I think we are doing a pretty significant job of curbing the criminal activity just from our proactiveness.
Do we know what the hotel charges per night?
I don't.
Okay. I mean, the only thing I can, you know, it's a motel, I'm sure that, you know, it's relatively low, and that's why it attracts the type of clientele that cause problems. So, I mean, we obviously can't regulate what a business charges, but, you know, they may want to think about that if they want to curb, you know, the problems that are occurring.
My question is, how successful has the flock camera system worked since being implemented in the city of West Covina?
The flock cameras have been very beneficial as far as deterring crime, and we've apprehended several felony criminals as a result of them.
Right, how many?
I can get you the exact numbers, but I mean, anywhere from people driving stolen cars to people in possession of weapons to even helping us solve murder cases.
The Hampton Inn, does it have these camera? Is that why the numbers of calls?
I do not believe the Hampton Inn has, I believe the only hotel that I'm aware of is the Holiday Inn.
And how many calls do they get? I mean, I'm assuming that the camera is picking up license plates and?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have the statistics for the Holiday Inn hotel.
Okay, thank you.
Well, the Hampton Inn, he said, had 35 last year, and so far this year, already 31.
How about, how about Best Western or I believe there's a couple hotels that are just on the other side of the freeway or motels just on the other side of the freeway from us, like, I think there's like Covina Motel, there's like Walnut Inn and Suites. How about those?
The other one I mentioned was the Wayside, I had data on that. I didn't, I didn't pull data or have data pulled on every single hotel or motel in the city. Again, if you guys, if the commission wants that data, I'd be more than happy to get that for you.
And I don't know if it's a question for you or city staff, does this location have a security guard? City staff, do you know?
I'm not aware of a security guard. The code enforcement director may be able to answer that question, but when I went out there, I didn't see a security guard.
I don't know if you can answer this question or not, it's kind of a hypothetical question, but have you seen businesses or organizations that have security guards? Would you say businesses who do have security guards, criminals are more deterred from committing a crime in front of that security guards or facility at times?
I don't have data on that.
Yeah, okay.
That would be good information if we could find out if some of the hotels have security and, you know, which ones do or if any of them.
I'm assuming it would be less grand deaf auto if there was a security guard there, but, I'm sorry, auto deaf, right, it was auto deaf, yeah.
If we don't have any further questions, then would we like to speak to the director of code enforcement?
You're having a security guard, and I mean, I've seen bank has a security guard, but I'm not sure if this hotel has a security guard.
In larger hotels, five stars, yes, they, those types of facilities do have.
I guess I've never looked at them. I frequent hotel quite a bit, but I just never noticed that there are security guards in front of their doors or?
Does she have any warrants?
We digress. I think we're done.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Chairman Gutierrez and members of the commission, I'm here to answer any questions regarding code enforcement you may have.
I do have a quick update, we did change chairs already, so it's Chair Williams. No problems.
Does anybody have any questions for regarding code enforcement activity?
I have a couple of questions. There, there's a, based on the report that I read, there's reference in it to, and give me one second, I want to pull over to that portion of the report, which indicates that I think there's been some determination that there are long term residents on site. How did you, how'd you come up with that determination? I'm just curious.
I believe the ownership told us when they took over, they had some long term tenant that they were addressing.
Okay. And what's, what's going on with regard to the long term tenants?
I'll defer to the ownership to answer that question, but I believe they're addressing through their legal counsel how to address that issue.
Okay, and they're not here tonight?
I am not aware of.
Okay, all right. Sorry, when you say they're addressing it through legal counsel, I want to just fully understand what that means. Does that mean that they're addressing it through legal counsel with the city or they're addressing it through legal counsel with regard to the long term residents?
I believe they're addressing the long term tenants through their own avenues, they're not, do not have any activity with our city attorney's office at this time.
Got it, so they're having to go through and evict these people, correct?
That is my understanding.
Okay, all right, that makes sense. With regard to, with regard to your code enforcement authority, do you have any ability to evict someone immediately from any premises within the city of West Covina?
No, I do not.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to make sure I understand what the scope of authority is, so, and then outside of, so right now, there are, there's unpermitted construction, which is currently under construction, correct?
There was an issue with some construction that was not covered under existing permits, but that has been corrected.
Okay, all right, so that's no longer an issue as far as your understanding?
That is correct.
So the only, the only open code enforcement issue right now is the long term residents who are presumably in some process being evicted, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, all right. Beyond, beyond that, I just want to make sure I understand, so there was an ownership change in 2022, correct?
That's my understanding.
Okay, and so there are eight code enforcement cases open since 2020. With regard to those eight code enforcement cases, were they with the current ownership or with the former ownership or some combination thereof?
Those eight cases are with the current ownership.
Okay, those eight cases are with the current ownership, so prior to 2022, there were no code enforcement issues, is that correct?
There were code enforcement issues before that.
Okay, I'm a little confused. So it said, so the report here says there were eight code enforcement cases open since 2020. I just want to make sure I understand, with regard to those cases, what's the breakdown between, because there's new ownership in 2022 is my understanding, based on the report, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, so what part of those eight cases, I assume there's one, obviously, the one from May 2023, obviously is the most recent case, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and that's with the current ownership?
Correct.
Okay, so with regard to the seven prior, do we know, were those all under the current ownership, partially under the current ownership, or all under the prior ownership in 2022?
I believe it's a combination of both because when the new ownership took over, they inherited some issues that were existing, and the new ownership was served notice. The ones that become the owner, they were served notice to address the issues that maybe were not addressed by previous ownerships. So if you buy a property and it's got weeds and trash, we're going to send a notice. If I buy a property and they have an opel vehicle sitting in the parking lot, we're going to send a notice to that ownership. If the paint's been peeling for 20 years, we're going to send a notice to the current ownership, even though it may have been somebody else's problem at one time.
Right, right. Just, just curious, has the, has the city initiated any administrative fines or civil penalties or anything like that against this, this property owner?
Not that I'm aware of.
All right. Is there, is there any administrative law proceedings that are currently pending against the owner of this property?
No, there is not.
All right. That was the only question I had for now.
Further questions?
So have all of the code violations been remedied or are they still outstanding?
They've all been remedied. That's correct, and that's a civil matter that I can't dictate a timeframe on, as long as somebody's working towards compliance, that we rely on the civil court proceedings, it's on their, the court's timeframe, it's not ours, it's something we deal with on a regular basis, we're at the mercy of the court and their timeframes.
I'm sure that the owners don't want problems, you know, I'm sure it's just as much a burden to them as it, you know, is for us to hear about all of these items, you know. You know, perhaps there's, you know, something that would help them to, you know, all these calls have to, you know, be a problem for them as well. So there has to be something that can be, you know, implemented or put into, you know, motion for them to deter a lot of this, these problems that they've been having. I mean, obviously, the information is very helpful. Did you have anything, any paperwork or anything to give to the commission for review?
No, I believe my supervisor has provided the planning department with whatever information we had. Most of the complaints were not significant enough to really generate a lot of paper. Usually it was a, each case is a call for service and typically it involved trash, opel vehicles.
So code enforcement is not an issue then?
Currently is not an issue, everything that we brought to their attention, they have addressed.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, is there any further discussion among the commissioners?
Chair, if I may, there might be members of the public that wishes to address the commission.
Okay. Is there members from the public who would like to address the commission at this time?
I'm in, yeah, Commissioners. I'm the new owner of these five star inn since, it says 2022, but actually, exact date is December 29, 2022, so not a full year of 2022. In 2023, the day one, then I purchased a property, I leased it out to the operator under M D V J L L C, and that operator was operating it up until July 1st. And a lot of leases are failing due to the economic conditions, they were not doing enough business that can generate the payments, so he stopped making payments since October of 2023. And I had to go through the legal procedures to get the operators out of the property, and finally, on July 1st, I was able to take the possession. Prior to taking the possession, I realized that there were 50 rooms out of order, totally not rentable conditions. So here remodel, the picture that you saw that was fixed is, the property is in two buildings. One building is three story building opposite to the office. On a office side is two story building, which Lacy has, in the beginning, he had a good business enough to put the money into, to bring the conditions up to date. But then, lack of business, lack of income, he didn't do anything, and he was promising, okay, I will fix it, but never did. And now I inherited from him after a year and a half of ownership, the 50 rooms that required a lot of work, which took about four months for me to finish. I hired a contractor to completely paint, do the bathrooms, practically everything that needs to be upgraded to the room is upgraded now. So I know the concerns that you have, I have more than you do because I am the legal owner, I am a responsible, there are a lot of legal consequences as well if, God forbid, something bad happens in the property. So if I improve it, obviously, it's, I've been in the business for 30 years, I have a property in Anaheim as well, right close to the Disneyland, which is doing a very good job, and I know different clientele there for the different reason they come there. Here in West Covina, in this particular pocket, you saw the numbers at even Days Inn. Days Inn wasn't this deteriorated property, yet they had a number of calls. And if you look at a Van Lee Hotel, that's also, I know at one point it was Embassy Suites, I remember, I stayed when it was Embassy Suites. And I remember when those Chinese people purchased it from the bankruptcy and look at the condition today, it's worse than Five Star Inn. I'm not comparing what is there and five star, but I have done everything in my power to bring it up to the condition that is inviting to the better clientele other than whoever has stayed here and caused all the problems for the police and city and neighbors and whatnot. So I'm fully aware of it, and I'm working towards screening the people, particularly prostitution is zero tolerance, zero. But with the booking.com and all the platform that you can book your room, somebody else can pay, parents or other people, and they can still check in, yet we are still refusing if we think it's doubtful in the sense that this is uninvited, I mean, unacceptable guest. So we are proactively doing this, and hopefully by end of the month, we will be doing, finish with doing the upgrades. But the second phase, which is also important, is the exterior in terms of landscaping, painting the building. So as soon as you pull into any property, hotel, motel, you see that, okay, this is totally deteriorated, I don't want to stay. Instead that, oh, look, this is nice. For a year and a half, I have not seen the lobby doors open. They were doing, conducting the business, if you ask the code enforcement or the police, through the night window, how can you do this business? So immediately after I took over, I have made this my staff aware, and I hired another GM who doesn't do the shift, but he's on the property, making sure everything is running smoothly and orderly. So we started doing so, opened the lobby, cleaned it up, it was nothing but storage for all year and a half. So even though I was owner, but I had, because it was lease no access. So you understand now some of the problem that was inherited it, but you will see the big difference in moving forward from here on. And I will make sure that the city will be proud of it, myself will be proud of a hotel that we have here. And when even we purchased it, the condition that was there was very bad. The previous owner has not, this property didn't get low and care for last, I would say, seven to 10 years. It came in all of a sudden on one person, but it has been building up until now. Fortunately, I am there with the day one determination that we will do it. And the Lassie has done it, 25 rooms, but no money or whatever his other problems, he didn't do it and finished the job. So if you have any other questions, I'm glad to answer that.
I have some questions. Yeah. Has, has anyone from our city council been able to visit your property?
I wasn't even there because, like I say, I'm only in there for a month. So, no, not during the last, July 1st. And my business license application is still even pending.
Okay.
For some reason, it's not getting approved.
Your business license?
Business license to operate the business.
Have you been an owner, how long has he been an owner, city staff?
It's because he was leasing, he had another company leasing it out, so now he's taking.
Lassie has a license to operate.
So do you think since, I'm sorry, is that okay if I ask a question?
I just have one more question, or two more. Okay, okay. So no members of the city council have visited a location while you've been in charge of the building?
In the last 30, 40 days, no.
No. Okay, okay. And then will you be agreeable if to, to putting security enhancements at your property, such as a flock camera that integrates back to the West Coast Police Department to catch criminals through license plate readers? Are you open to something like that?
I don't know how it works, but I'm ready to cooperate with the police department, yeah.
And then are you open to, to minimize the amount of calls for service? Because, because it does put a burden on our police officers if they have to respond to a location so many and many, many times. And, you know, we're a huge city and our officers work diligently. The men and women of the Western Police Department have to respond to calls throughout the city of West Covina. And it creates a burden on our officers if they have to respond to one location often and to do, because of, sometimes they knew, they know something might happen, they, they conduct extra patrol and so forth. Are you open to hiring a security guard full time for your facility?
This property cannot support hiring of.
Point of order, point of order. A city attorney, is it appropriate to try to secure, how can I say it? Agreement to conditions that are not before us and that this is only a report to receive and file?
I believe it's just an open discussion, a question and answer. I don't think there's any actionable item on, on the agenda for today. So it's, this is not like a modification of any conditions that are existing already. I believe this is just questions and answers to have a discussion, so there's no action on whatever will be presented today.
Okay.
I'm just glad that the hotel owners are, is, are here and actually is listening. And as us as well, we're listening to see like some of the reports that the police provided or the code enforcement that they have provided. And hopefully you can, based on what you have gathered as well as what we had, you know, been told tonight, you can perhaps work with the police officer and see the reports and around all the hotels, they do have those documents. And see if perhaps, you know, since you are renovating your, I, I understand that currently they're not making monies or, you know, security guard is not in, you know, looking to hire a security guard, what have you. Like I said, I've never went to a hotel that I've actually saw a security guard. Maybe I wasn't actively looking for them, but perhaps you can work with them and see, or, you know, you are trying. It seems like you're trying to improve, hopefully, since you've been taking it over for the whole full year of 2023 and actually leased it out and just recently got it under your own name since July, which is.
July 1st?
Just a month ago.
A month ago.
But is that true, city staff? Did he just take over a month ago? Isn't he the responsible owner for last year?
He's, the, the property owner stated that he was leasing it to another operator.
I know, but was he the owner?
Um, he was the owner, his corporation owned the property, but he was leasing it to another operator.
His corporation owned the property for how long?
Um, I believe our record said December 2022.
Okay, thank you, so.
So you've only had the property for a little over a month. During the past years that you, that this person has been leasing this, your business, did you, were you aware of any of the problems that they were having?
No, I never got the letter from the city or from them. Of course, there were some code violation that I just recently learned about.
Yes, so you were surprised to hear everything that is going on when you finally did get him out?
Yes.
Okay, so do you think when you took possession of the property, July 1st, do you, do you feel that you have already rectified some of the problems that were occurring? Or I know it's going to be a process, it's not like you can do it overnight.
Right.
But do you feel that you have maybe, maybe some, you're going to be putting in place some rules or regulations within, you know, maybe your staff or, like you just said earlier about how they look at the IDs, you know. I mean, is there anything that you can do that would, you know, stop it or lessen? I mean, obviously, it's not going to be, you know, go away completely. Every business has little problems or whatnot, but what do you feel?
As an experienced hotel motel operator.
Right, you're an experienced hotel, successful hotel owner.
Try to teach our staff, obviously, we cannot be there 24/7. So ultimately, we had to rely on the staff who rent the room. And still, you know, those people that do commit crimes, they sneak in or one-person rent seems to be decent. And maybe they have visitor later in the evening or at the dark. It's very hard to 100% stop, like you said. But as soon as we see that this is something happening, we ask them to leave or we, I trained, I already have, like I said, I hired a GM who would be constantly overseeing the operation as well to help the staff and hopefully they would help. Because, you know, each, each individual, each indie, who rents the room, it's very hard to determine what they're after, why they're here. Obviously, it's not a tourist destination or any. And the north side of the hotels are, you know, more inviting and whatnot. So obviously, this is something that we have to be more vigilant in doing what we can the best. But that's why we were improving the property where, where once people know that, oh, look, this is nice motel for the affordable price. You were asking earlier what rate and whatnot. I heard you, somebody, you were asking hotel room rates. So it's, it's under $100, somewhere in that range, depends on the weekend or weekdays.
When did you start remodeling the hotel?
When?
Uh, yeah.
Like I said earlier, 25 rooms, Lassie has done it, the three-story building on opposite side of the office. I started spending money about three months ago.
Three months ago, but you took, but you took charge a month ago?
As an operator, yes, because I was in, I wasn't just send over the key right away. But I realized that it's going to happen one day, so I, that building was closed anyways.
And then just for clarification on, on, so the public understands, city staff, if you're saying that his company owned, I mean, sorry, his company had the city license for over, for a year now? Is that correct?
Our record shows that his, that his company owned the property since December 2022. As far as a business license for, for the property owner as the operator, I believe that's, that's something, that's an application that we, we received that, agenda, was it, HGL received recently.
And then so a year ago, was the business license under his operator's name or his, or his company's name?
A, a different operator.
It was under his operator's name?
A different operator.
Different operator, okay. And then if, for code enforcement violations that were occurring, who's, does the city provide notices to the property owner and tenant? Or to the operator and the owner in this case?
I believe that code enforcement provides, for any code enforcement violation, they provide notices of violation to both the property owner and to the tenant, but Mylan would be able to clarify that information.
But that's only code enforcement, was it, how about for excessive calls to the police department? Does he get any notification? I know if my, if my alarm goes off in my house more than a couple, three times, I start getting a, a letter from the fire department, I'm going to get billed. So does he get any notice?
No. In, in, in this category that you see a lot of 271 calls, if you really see what actual trouble calls are, maybe one-third. Some of them are traffic violations, stop at the near property or by property and like the captain was explaining. Some of them are, in this case, you saw the long-term and whatnot, so there are some medical calls too, because some issues with the, so 911, when you see, it's not about all the threat or trouble. Some of them were medical-related calls. Because I happened to be there one day and I saw very heavyset guy, there was very hard to breathe and they, there was ambulance and paramedic was there for, they called 911.
Well, we're glad that you're back in possession of your property. And, you know, I think when we discuss, we'll, we'll be able to determine, you know, that, I mean, ultimately, you are responsible for your property, but obviously, we don't want to, you know, we're not here, just like Commissioner Lewis said, we're not here to revoke your, your conditional use permit, but we, we do have to make sure that, you know, things are improving, not getting worse and for the protection of the residents. But we thank you for, for being here.
Thank you. And I'll just have one more question. And I know you were, I know you couldn't finish it, but would you be open to, we're not, I'm not saying you, you, you have to, but I'm asking a general question, are you open to having a security guard at, at your facility, at your motel?
If I was allowed to have this pathway program, I would have 24/7 security with two guards. And this property would have been guarded, operated far better, had put more money into city's pocket. And I am willing to share some of the profit with the city, which we currently losing. I remember Councilman Tony was saying the other day, give us some money and we'll take care of our homeless. I would say, I will give you the money from the share that other cities taking, we're not getting nothing. I remember there was a $14 million worth of money would have set aside for this city, had been allowed in this city. Like I said, I would still share some of them, which we are all losing. And this pocket, you saw Days Inn and Five Star, no matter what you do, but this is south side of the pocket, has this runoff. People jump over, it's in the pocket, which is, you can't compare this with the Hampton Inn, that's the reality. This would have avoided all this problem. And I know, I was in this chamber, I heard more than 50% of the people were in support of this pathway home project. And like I said, Ed, I'm willing to share some of the profit with the city. I would say, at least, I guarantee you 100,000, I will give it to the city of West Covina, which can be used for the police and other activities, parks, whatever that needs to be done from my corporation. If, and this county is ready to award this, this contract, and it's, it's not only city that, that they're doing this. Other cities like Pomona, I know some of the people, Pomona, Lancaster, Palmdale, and some of those cities are getting the benefit of this South Gate, so many. So this is something I highly recommend for the city council as well as commissioners to look into it one more time and see, see the facts. They have the tour, I saw one of the mayor of the city, we went to tour the motel in, in Pomona to see how these pathway projects are getting operated. So I know sometime the presentation is make it or break it type of situation creates. And I remember last time it was like, people were against and for, but I, if anybody would think with peace of mind that let's look into it first. And I promise you, if anything that city or council or commissioners finds after the six months of operation, give us thought. Six months of operation, I willingly pull, pull it off, take it, cancel the program. But before even get into it, we're stopping it, we're not getting any fair share or doing the community service like the other folks were really after, looking for the people who are unfortunate and less, you know, I mean, less fortunate and so many other ways that they fall into this homelessness. So this is something that city will be proud of it too, that look, we are doing our part too. And like I said, I will willingly cancel it if you, all members or the police or whoever would combine, make the decision that this is not for our city. That's fine, then we go back. But this is something will give 24-hour security and, and eliminate the issues that already there with the county's money.
And when, when were you first informed about that project?
Sorry?
When were you first, when were you first approached about that project?
I didn't approach, the county approached.
Yeah, when, when did they do that?
Oh, when?
Yeah.
Uh, few months back.
How many months, you know, roughly, how many months?
About four months, maybe.
So they reached out to the operator or you?
They reached out to me.
Okay, so you were in charge?
They don't lease it from the Lassie.
Okay.
They'd lease it, the master lease has to be from the landlord only.
Okay.
So they cannot lease.
Okay, great.
Since you have other hotels, had your hotels in the past, did you use them for the pathway homes?
No. I, pathway home is a very recent program. It was never introduced before, it's just not even a year-old program. There are different programs. So pathway home is a master lease, the different programs that has, they, they awarded to the nonprofits. And the nonprofits put their clients into different hotel motels throughout, which I think the LASSA is the name of the main entity who hires the nonprofit. And their, what do you call it, case managers would, would help these people in need.
You know, I was here the night that they were discussing it with the city council. And there was only a handful of people who, who were in favor of the pathway program. Most of the residents did not want it. And I have spoken to people who have visited the different locations and they said that it's a mess. It's not as organized, because you're limited, you're limited to what you can do even more, because really, it's the city's property, so there's not a whole lot. Point of order. We are waiting also for, to ask some further questions from the code enforcement officer.
Can we let her finish though? She's speaking.
So, that being said. So, that being said, anyways, that's what the feedback is, is that there's, there isn't, it's not a good benefit to those cities there perhaps.
I'm going to say point of order. I think we're getting kind of outside the scope of what this report that we're talking about is.
Because that's not even on the table, so that's fine. You should have said that to him when you started talking about it, when you brought it up in the first place.
Yeah, the applicant mentioned it. And so the commission is asking questions regarding what the applicant just stated. So I think it's within the commissioner's right to ask that question.
I'm done.
Thank you. Thank you.
We could have the code enforcement officer come up.
I'm here to answer any further questions you may have.
Yes, I just, I think we just need a clarification. When a code enforcement violation occurs, is the, in this case, the operator and hotel owner notified of what's going on in regards to code violations?
As with all our cases, the letter goes to the property owner on file and it also goes to the occupant or called the site address. So with each code enforcement case letter we send out, there's two letters. One to the, who we show as the property owner and whoever the occupant is.
And did any of those, and after the first notice, what happens after the first notice?
So under our standard procedures, we will send a first notice, which we usually call courtesy notice, which is just a letter identifying the code sections we've identified in violation and some simple remedies to cure those. There would be a notice of violation. And our third notice is a notice of administrative citation, which outlines civil penalties and other actions that the city has the option of taking if the violations are not cured. Typically, from there, that we'd go to an administrative citation if the violation continues. And from there, we have the option at any time for a referral to our city prosecutor's office to take more actions if needed. Most cases do not reach that point. Most cases in the city are cured within the first or second notice.
And then, so for this hotel operator, with this owner, within the time he took ownership, was notices, did these issues get resolved or did they go ignored?
To my knowledge, all the issues were resolved with the first letter that was sent.
Okay.
Any further questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one question for our captain again.
Yes.
Within the last three months, how many calls of service, do you know, have been at this location?
I'd have to get that specific data for you.
Okay. Do you know how many calls of service for this month or last month?
Not for the month, I just have the year-to-date total.
And so that will be January through?
August 12th.
August 12th. And how many was that? 148, perfect. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Now we'll have discussion among the commission. Start with Commissioner Lewis. Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yeah, I'll just say that I think, I think the conditions of approval, I'll say that I commend, I commend the willingness of the operator to remedy the situations that were spoken here today. And I think something that this commission can look at is possibly updating, doing an update to the conditions of approval, since they are very outdated and very old. And I think they're on a film, because they're so old, on a film strip. City staff had to run it through the machine to print it out. And, but regardless, I think a code update, I'm sorry, CUP, conditional use permit update, to reflect on modern, the modern, more modern policies of the city. And I will say, I think to minimize, because there is quite a few calls of service. And so I will encourage the commission to, at a future, I don't know how that will work, city attorney, but to recommend a update to the conditions of approval. So a flock camera system can be mandated and a, and maybe possibly a security guard for a few months to see if that minimizes the calls of service at this location. But that's my comments.
I would motion for maybe to look at this in six months and see if it's improved. You know, if he's, I mean, ultimately, he is responsible, it is his business, or he leased it out to the operator. You know, we can discuss maybe what, you know, future liability he would have even to not, you know, you can't foresee this, what they would have done to run a bad business and affect him. But, you know, he is, he still carry the liability. But now that he has taken possession of the property, maybe perhaps with what Commissioner Gutierrez is saying and perhaps with the review at a later date to see if there's been improvement.
To clarify your motion, is your motion to bring back for an update and a report as to the property and the status in six months, is that your motion?
Right. I think we should still see the paperwork, what we've seen, just so we could have something to compare it with. You know, I believe the captain, captain was going to get us some information.
Yes, I'll, once that information is given to staff, I'll include it with your, the next planning commission meeting report. It'll just be a, it'll just be an item attached to the, to the agenda report that talks about, that includes all that information.
Right. And then he would need to be informed, not just at the business, but wherever he gets his service for his corporation. They need to be given notices when there are violations, when there are excessive calls. I mean, he's saying that he's never been given any notice other than code enforcement. So at, you know, we want to make sure all the owners, any owner with the business in Wes Covina is getting notified that they will not be able to say that they were not, not aware.
Are you amending your motion or are you just, I didn't know if we're going to have a second and a vote on your motion to bring it back?
That part would be internal, that we should be giving the owners notice. But, I mean, unless someone has something better, any other suggestions.
I mean, I was going to make a motion, but if Commissioner Basera was willing to add it to her motion, which was to mandate a flock, one flock camera system be installed at this location, which has been very successful in catching felony convictions, according to.
This is informational purposes only. We do not request from the owner. However, I mean, there is, in terms of changing hand and lease operator and that they just received their property since July of this year, perhaps we're keeping an eye out to see how is it progressing for the next six months or so, even though six months is pretty fast. It will come and go.
I suggest we hear from our city attorney.
Your motion pending with no second at this moment.
I'd like to make a counter motion to receive and file.
Is that a bad emotion?
And I'll make a motion to, okay, go ahead.
Keep the record. You had an alternate motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion to bring this back to the commission and to get an update to this commission in five months to get an update on the calls of service at this location and any updates in regards to the calls of service and criminal activities since the owner does say that he just took possession a month ago. So in this case, it'll be, it'll be very helpful to get an update on the matters presented here as he's saying that he's responsible now. And I'll say if we could get an update within five months to get an update on the calls of service.
A second. Okay, I'll go ahead and take the roll call vote.
Hold on, I don't understand. What are we voting on and is there discussion?
There is a motion to bring this back to, this is the alternate to the alternate motion, to bring this item back for an update in five months to the planning commission.
So we're voting on the alternate alternate, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Okay, I'll go ahead and.
I have a comment that I have to make before we proceed.
Point of order.
So with regard to, with regard to going forward with the motion to receive and file, really, really did not want to bring this up. But my problem is, is that we have a commissioner sitting here who has already said that.
Point of order, there's a motion, a point of order, point of order. There's a motion and a second. Point of order, I have a point of order first, ma'am. Are you angry? Are you angry or something? We already have. We already have. City attorney intervening.
So we, so.
Chair can.
We have a situation, we can all speak. I think that that is perfectly fair. We have a situation in which a commissioner up here has addressed the city council, identifying himself as a commissioner, stating that he was going to revoke this gentleman's conditional use permit unequivocally.
That's false.
And he is participating in.
I said we were here first.
That was before we had information tonight.
Yes, I said we were here first.
Decision.
Now we want to give him a chance.
Point of order.
And he's participating.
Point of order.
And he's participating.
Point of order. Are you angry?
And he's participating.
This is not a conditional use permit meeting.
Point of order.
We have a motion and a second. Can we do a roll call?
Can't even hear anybody at this point.
And he's participating in a decision which negatively impacts this gentleman's, this gentleman's right to property. And I think that's just appalling. Ultimately, we live in a, even if.
Point of order.
Even if.
Point of orders don't work now?
To believe that this is permissible under the, under the FPPC standards.
Robert's rules of order here.
This is a situation in which, in which.
This is a violation of the Robert rules of order by our.
Hero.
We have a violation of.
Back and letting us do our job.
City attorney.
Already prejudged this situation.
We're going to take a recess?
Yes.
In five minutes.
We're in the middle of a motion. We have a vote pending, we have a motion and a second. Prior to going to recess, we do need to vote on that and then we can take the recess. There is a motion and a second. Motion by Commissioner Gutierrez, an alternate to the alternate motion to bring back to the planning commission in five months to update the commission on the calls for service and criminal activity. And there was a second by Commissioner Basera. The vote?
Commissioner Basera?
Aye.
Commissioner Lewis?
It is utterly unethical, no.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hang? Chair Williams?
No.
Illegal counsel.
Motion passed.
Oh my God.
So five-minute breaks?
Yes. We have a five-minute recess.
Okay, are we ready to start back the meeting? Commissioner Lewis, have you finished your comments?
So I, we just had a vote. I would certainly appeal to the better angels of my fellow commissioners making this suggestion for purposes of preserving comity on this board. I would just suggest that we potentially consider sending this, sending this issue and the review or whatever to the city council. I think that that's the best way forward ultimately. There are certainly political aspects of this that ultimately, I don't think it's appropriate that we should be wading into. So I would, I would certainly encourage someone from, from the majority to consider a motion for reconsideration to do that. I think it would be appropriate. I think at the end of the day, it, it gets this out of our hair, so to speak.
We're not here to get things out of our hairs. As commissioners, we are the bodies that are making policies and rules. That's what we're here for. And if we don't want to do that, perhaps, you know, we don't send this to city councils because we don't like it or we're uncomfortable or we can't make the decision. That's not it. We're, this body here as planning commission, we are making all the plans for land use. And this encompasses the uncomfortable decision sometimes. And this is very, it's uncomfortable when something that is not running smoothly, but at the same time, we met the owner and they're trying, you know, they're trying to take over and they're trying to get their, I believe it's a, whether it's a permit or what have you, they're just applying. It's only been a month. So we should wait and see and see how the new, you know, owner is going to do. But this is a body that makes policies in, for land use and we're here. That's what we're here for. So we're not sending this to city council, at least not me.
Commissioner Basera?
Not, I, I will not send it. I agree wholeheartedly with what Commissioner Hang said.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
I concur with Commissioner Hang.
So do we have another motion on the floor?
I don't think we have a motion.
We've already completed the motion.
Was there a motion, Commissioner Lewis?
I don't think we could make a motion.
That is correct.
We're on to the next item.
Do not. Our next item is planning commission standing meeting rules. Joanne, who will be presenting this?
I will be, Chair Williams. At the last planning commission meeting, the planning commission reviewed the, the standing, the planning commission standing meeting rules. And there were comments or changes that were requested by the planning commission, including to add the quick guide to the Robert's rules of order at the end of the standing meeting rules as a ref, and reference it within the document. Staff has made the changes requested by the planning commission and has prepared the resolution, resolution number 24-6152. If there are no other changes, then the recommendation is to adopt the resolution. However, if there are any changes, staff will, will go ahead and make the modification.
I believe that the, so we already implemented the new, you know, way of communication here and it doesn't seem to be any better than before. Just seems to be a little more biased because of our chair. So it just seems like nobody can finish what they say. There's a point of order, point of order. And it just seems like there's more, more bickering and tantrums. So I don't believe that the new changes are any better.
First of all, which I think as civil servants, we forget that we're here to serve.
Somebody's forgetting.
And to hear everyone. It is difficult for people watching on cable to understand what is going on when we have multiple people speaking. The chair is supposed to recognize each person before they speak. If we have groups of people speaking, nothing gets done, nothing gets accomplished. And that hurts the city as a whole.
This whole, this whole communication. This whole, this whole communication hurts the city as a whole.
Point of order.
Point of order, yes.
Point of order.
It's all hurts everybody.
Point of order.
Hurts the commission's, our reputation of our city.
Point of order. There is one chair. So we're asking that you deal with decorum.
Slap that gavel some more.
The chair, I will ask you to be fair, a fair leader, and when your fellow commissioners want to speak, that you just don't let one other commissioner have privilege in speaking.
I agree.
While you're banging your gravel saying point of order and eliminating the opportunity for your other commissioners to speak. Because sometimes commissioners have questions for staff and sometimes these commissioners may have the answers that staff may not have. And so that's why it's important to have an open collaboration and dialogue on it in this chamber.
When someone is recognized by the chair to speak, the appropriate thing to do is to allow them to finish their communications.
That's not always the case with somebody, but you don't seem to say point of order.
Even now, decorum. That is at least what we should give the public.
Please practice it.
Chair, if I may speak, if any of the commissioners have any further revisions to the exhibit that was provided to you as part of the packet, the changes that were requested at the last review of the rules have been incorporated, but the question before you right now is if there are any further revisions here that you would like to see in how this commission operates. So if there are any suggested changes to the language or any further revisions that you would like to make, then this item, you can direct the additional revisions to the director here, deputy director. And, director, and she will incorporate it further into a revised draft. If the commission today is ready to proceed with the already incorporated changes from last time, then we, you would be prepared to discuss and, and move on this. That is the question before the commission tonight. I did not want to have everything, everybody go off topic as to what is on the agenda.
So are we, I'm sorry, can we make revisions? Or is it just for to finalize this or we are eligible to make revisions?
You're, you're still welcome to make further revisions.
And I'd like to continue, I'd like to make a motion to continue to speak with city attorney to see what revisions would be more beneficial for this commission.
I'll second.
I need to clarify the motion, please. It is to continue to when?
Continue, motion to continue to another date.
And it would be actually appropriate to direct your requested revisions and your red lines to staff so that they have an idea and understanding of what your requested changes are and it can be brought back for further discussion and then approval by the commission at a future hearing.
Thank you.
Your motion is to continue this item to another future date, but not a date, not a date certain, not the very next meeting, but whenever it's ready?
It, it, that's fine, the next meeting is fine.
Second?
I don't second.
I thought I heard one.
Madam Chair? I, I just have a question. I'm just trying to figure out, I, I don't really understand, what are we continuing this for? I, are we just continuing it for the sake of continuing it or?
Do we have a vote, do we have a vote right now?
Changes that need to be.
Vote, please.
That need to be made.
Joanne, can you do the roll call, please?
Point of inquiry?
We have a motion right now going.
Point of order, we have a, a motion and a second. Point of inquiry?
I will let the chair.
Roll call.
I'll, I'll let the chair.
Chair, can we do?
The next speaker, there are too many to.
Too people, too many people speaking.
Commissioner Lewis, finish with your question.
My, I just had a point of inquiry about the, the purpose of the continuance.
So we have a, a second and a, a first and a second. Can we do roll call, Chair?
Is there a motion to call, call the vote? Commissioner Gutierrez, are you making a motion to call the vote?
Wow, that will be, according to this Roberts rules of order, it will be to overrule the chair's ruling, but she hasn't made a ruling yet. Can we do a roll call, Chair?
I thought that.
Commissioner Becerra?
Had already made a motion and they were asking for a second to that motion.
Okay, Commissioner Lewis?
I abstain because I don't know what this is about.
Commissioner Becerra?
Aye.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hang?
Aye.
Chair Williams?
No.
Motion passes to continue.
At this time, Joanne, our deputy director, do you have anything to report concerning council's actions?
There are no council actions to report.
Okay. Looking at the time, I believe you have no other business to conduct.
Sorry, Chair, if I may?
Yeah.
Not regarding council, items for council to report, but just directors' report in general. Today, we submitted the, the current draft of the housing element to HCD.
Good to hear about that. Okay.
Is there, is there a timeline upon which, this is the updated draft, correct?
Yes, per, per state law, HCD has 60 days to, to report, to provide us a letter or certification. However, prior to submitting the, the updated draft, staff has been informally submitting to HCD. So we're at the level that we were comfortable enough to submit to them to hopefully get certification.
Excellent, thank you.
Does that conclude with our business?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Planning commission meeting is now adjourned at 9:34.